Good evening. Thank you all so much for joining us this evening for the May 20th Board of Education meeting. If you could all join me with a pledge to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And we will begin this evening with our special acknowledgements, the Rye Recognition of Excellence Awards.
Good evening, everyone. It is so lovely to see such a big crowd tonight for a wonderful celebration of the arts. In 2012, we introduced our student recognition program, the Rye Recognition of Excellence Awards. Tonight, I am proud to congratulate 67 outstanding music students who we are commending with this honor. Tonight's award recipients are music students from elementary through high school who participated in the NISMAs Solo and Ensemble Festivals this year. So please come up to the podium to receive your award as I call your name. And we'll begin with our youngest musicians. So we have students of Anna Dagmar-Johnson, Ethan Chang, 4th grade, violin. Dylan Chung, 5th grade, piano. Wait, stay up here, Ethan. Ethan, come back. Go all the way and then stay over by the screen there. Keep him up there, okay? Vinant Desikamani, 5th grade, piano. Ajay Upal, 4th grade, piano. Scarlett Warren, 5th grade, piano. Jonathan Waglum, 4th grade, piano. And Jonathan received a perfect score. Ryan Yao, 4th grade, piano. Students of Ms. Rita Pizzano, Timmy Higgins, 4th grade, piano. Students of Ms. Leah Spurber, Carlotta Bjornson, 3rd grade, piano. Nell Reuter, 2nd grade, piano. Rafe Reuter, 4th grade, piano. Students of Matthew Strang, Mac Gaus, 4th grade, trumpet. Kato Kagami, 4th grade, snare drum. Leo Lax, 4th grade, snare drum. Amkar Manhari, 5th grade, flute. Millie Moreland, 5th grade, flute. Angelica Song, 5th grade, flute. Angelica received a perfect score. Vivian Thierl, 5th grade, flute. Students of Lisbeth Burrow at Rye Middle School, Brandon Abate, 7th grade, violin. Alyssa Anastasia, 7th grade, viola. Rosie DeFeyf, 6th grade, violin. And Rosie received a perfect score. Emily Howe, 8th grade, cello. Margaret Kilroy, 8th grade, violin. Xavier Morell, 7th grade, viola. And Xavier received a perfect score. Hannah Nelson, 7th grade, violin. Asher Newbart, 7th grade, piano. Owen Picker, 7th grade, piano. Max Rappaport, 6th grade, cello. Charlie Van Manen, 7th grade, violin. Millen Valamore, 7th grade, piano. Victoria Wolfalk, 7th grade, piano. We have students of Victoria Jesse, Eve Balger, 7th grade, soprano. Eve received a perfect score. Alexandra Brand, 7th grade, soprano. Anna Johnson, 7th grade, soprano. Amelia Harris, 8th grade, soprano. Students of Tyler Schwerian, Liam Brown, 7th grade. Liam is being recognized for two instruments, alto sax and bass clarinet. Regular clarinet. Kevin Chung, 6th grade, piano. Micah Golub, 7th grade, alto sax. Grace Higgins, 7th grade, piano. Armon Josepian, 8th grade, alto sax. Anastasia Huen, 6th grade, flute. Ben Martin, 7th grade, tuba sousaphone. Elise Mayfar, 8th grade, bass clarinet. Ishan Mederita, 8th grade, alto sax. Andrew Moreland, 8th grade, French horn. Aim Song, 7th grade, trombone. James Thomas, 6th grade, clarinet. Students of Dan Brown, Stefan Gurike, 9th grade, trumpet. Jenna Klopfer, 9th grade, flute. Cole Peijin, 10th grade, tuba sousaphone. Justin Qui, 9th grade, snare drum. Sehio Valamore, 9th grade, bass clarinet. Grace Wang, 11th grade, flute. And we have students of Lisbeth Burrow at Rye High School, Dario Abate, 9th grade, violin. Andre Anastasia, 9th grade, cello. Thomas Chen, 10th grade, cello. William Field, 10th grade, violin. Lucas Gordon, 11th grade, violin. Teddy Higgins, 9th grade, piano. Tito Diego Huihua, 8th grade, viola. Philip Karianis, 10th grade, violin. Stephen Kilroy, 9th grade, viola. Emma Lamont, 9th grade, viola. Timothy Morell, 9th grade, viola. Luke Padavano, 9th grade, cello. Taiga Viral, 10th grade, cello. Madeline Waddington, 9th grade, cello. Kaliana Yang, 9th grade, violin. Finally, I have to add that the Rye City School District was just recognized with the Best Communities for Music Education designation by NAMM, the National Association of Music Merchants, a trade organization for the music products industry. We are one of just over 1,000 schools across the country who have been recognized and have demonstrated a deep commitment to music education. Congratulations to you all on your outstanding achievements in music this year. And now, we're going to Mrs. Durman. This is a big crowd, so Mrs. Durman's going to take some photos, and she can certainly make them available to you, but you'll also be able to come up and take some photos. And I will make one last plug. If you have not yet voted, please stop in the Rye Middle School gym on your way out, and please vote. You get a cool sticker. We have some models wearing their stickers. It's so important to help continue these wonderful programs, and the polls will be open until 9:00 PM. And I believe if you haven't had dinner yet and these snacks just made you hungry, there's a concession set up outside. Oh, it's all done, Billy? You ate all the hamburgers? Okay, sorry about that. Load up on cookies and fruit kebabs. But we'll take some photos. And you feel free to come up as soon as Mrs. Durman's done. You can take all the photos you'd like.
All right, we will now continue with the board meeting with the report of the superintendent, Dr. Burn.
Good evening, and thank you for joining us for our May 20th Board of Education meeting. Today is the day of the annual school district budget vote and Board of Education trustee election. So if you haven't voted, please come down to the Rye Middle School gym and vote. The polls are open until 9:00 PM this evening, and there is plenty of parking available in the middle school parking lot. I will send out an email with the results of the budget vote and Board of Education trustee election later on this evening. So keep an eye out for that. There are quite a few things going on on the campus today. This afternoon, many of us attended a Spring for Rye event to mark the installation of a plaque honoring the campaign that brought 200 trees to the Rye City School District campuses. The National Honor Society induction ceremony for 147 members of the junior class took place earlier this evening. We had some inductees who are children of Board of Education trustees participating. And of course, we just celebrated 67 NISMAs students with Rye Recognition of Excellence Awards here at tonight's meeting. Since our last meeting, things have been very busy in the district. Milton held its annual 2nd grade biography tea. Midland's 1st graders performed the play Character Matters, and Osborne students enjoyed a spirit assembly featuring an inflatables race. And if you've never seen teachers dressed up as inflatable dinosaurs, fish, dragons, and other creatures racing around a soccer field, I highly recommend it. I've had some thoughts of potentially spreading this around the community on Friday with my update. But in addition, we have, I think you should definitely get yourself into one of those races sometime. It looked like quite a bit of fun. There have been lots of elementary school spring vocal orchestra and band concerts across the district as well. Last Friday was the 44th Annual RMS, Garnet and Black Field Day. This year, Team Black came out on top, but the good-natured competition and laughs were the real winners of the day. The Middle School Music Review New York, New York took place the weekend before, last to rave reviews. Friday was the last day on campus for our seniors as they departed for their senior internships, and next Friday night is senior prom. Thank you in advance to all the parent volunteers and teachers who are helping check in the students and chaperone the dance. The end-of-year activities will continue over the next month. Last week, we sent out end-of-year calendars to parents at the elementary, middle, and high schools to help them keep track of all of the incredible events. They are also posted on the homepage of the district website for all to refer to. And that concludes my report for this evening.
That is certainly a lot. We have a lot of exciting things going on. It's always a busy time, but it's always a great time in the district. So we will now move on to presentation and discussion number one, where we do not have anything this evening. We have hearing of the public on non-agenda items, but we have no public, so I will spare you all this evening of my open statement. And we will move forward then to the consent agenda. Can I have a motion, please, to approve this evening's consent agenda? Sean Klopfer seconded by Matt Shippenoff. Let's take a look at tonight's consent agenda. Consent agenda general. Consent agenda fiscal. Consent agenda professional appointments. Consent agenda classified appointments. And consent agenda pupil personnel services and special education. Seeing no questions or comments, can I have a vote for approving this evening's consent agenda? All those in favor? That's seven, nothing. Let's take a look at tonight's consent agenda. So on tonight's consent agenda, we have adopted a resolution for the modification of the volunteer firefighter and ambulance tax exemptions. This allows community members that volunteer as firefighters or EMS ambulance workers in other towns to be eligible for a tax exemption here in Rye. This is in keeping with exemptions that exist for those community members who volunteer as firefighters and EMS workers and live in Rye. So now, there is parity between those crucial volunteer jobs that are done. We also have the approval of a merger for our girls' ice hockey team for the 25-26 season. You know, I always love these. It's a way to make sure that all of our students can participate in the sports and extracurricular activities that they enjoy. In addition, this evening, we have lots of hires and other sort of HR things, but we also have four retirements this evening. So we will begin with Angela Borzaccini. Hopefully, I got that right, Angela. "It is with sadness that I announced the retirement of longtime Midland School teacher aide Angela Borzaccini." Angela retired at the end of April after 33 years in the Rye City School District, most of them at Midland. Ms. Borzaccini first came to the Rye City School District in 1992 as a substitute cashier and food service worker at Rye High. In 2005, she moved to Midland School to become a general education teacher's aide, and there she stayed for 20 years, working as a 1st and 3rd grade teacher aide, and last, as a specials support teacher aide. Prior to coming to Rye, Ms. Borzaccini worked as a hand-insert advertising agency, Hoads Daniel, Inc., in Elmsford, New York. Ms. Borzaccini is a graduate of Giacomo Puccini High School in Napoli, Italy. Ms. Midland School principal, Jim Boylen, said of her, "After 33 devoted years with the Rye City School District, Ms. Borzaccini is retiring." Angela began her career here in 1992 as a cafeteria monitor, quickly becoming a beloved presence at Midland School. Primarily serving as a general education aide, she wore many hats and embraced multiple responsibilities, always with a smile. Thousands of students have benefited from her kind and supportive supervision over the decades. We wish Angela all the very best in her well-deserved retirement and all her future endeavors. In her retirement letter, Ms. Borzaccini said, "Midland School has been my home away from home for the last 33 years. I leave with a full heart, cherished memories, and good friends. I will forever be a garnet." Ms. Borzaccini, we wish you all the very best in your retirement. We also are accepting the retirement of Ms. Rosa Magnana. "It is with sadness that I announced the retirement of longtime Rye City School District secretary clerical worker, Rosa Magnana." Ms. Magnana will retire at the end of June after 21 years working in the Rye City School District. Ms. Magnana first came to the Rye City School District in 2001 as an office assistant at Midland School. In 2004, she transferred to the middle school to become the secretary to the school principal. After 10 years, Ms. Magnana moved to the special education department to become a senior office assistant. In 2022, she moved to the high school middle school to become a security aide, and it is from this position that she is retiring. Ms. Magnana is a familiar face to many in the community as she acted as a ticket taker at the Rye High School and Rye Middle School sports events and drama productions, as well as a monitor during PSATs and SATs. Before coming to Rye, Ms. Magnana was a typist in the Blindbrook-Rye Unified Free School District and a clerical substitute in the Harrison Central School District. Ms. Magnana has an associate's degree in applied science from Berkeley College. Dr. Burns said of her, "It is always a pleasure to see Rosa welcoming kids to the middle school or to events at the high school with a huge smile on her face. It's clear that she adores the kids and vice versa. She will be missed." Ms. Magnana, I will miss seeing you at many of the student events and school events, and we hope that you will continue to come and spend time, but this time, as a spectator. We wish you all the best in your retirement. We are also accepting the retirement of Ms. Laura Cunningham Barrett. "It is with sadness that I announced the retirement of longtime special education teacher Laura Cunningham Barrett." Ms. Cunningham Barrett will retire at the end of June after 15 years teaching in the Rye City School District and 27 years in teaching overall. Ms. Cunningham Barrett came to the Rye City School District in 2009 as a special education teacher at Rye Middle School. In 2013, she moved from Rye Middle School to Rye High School, still as a special education teacher, and it is from there that she is retiring. In her time at Rye High School, she served as a high school writing mentor from the 2014-15 school year until the 2017-18 school year. She was a new teacher mentor in 2018, 2019, and 2024. In 2018, she also served on the district's Special Education Task Force. Before coming to Rye, Ms. Cunningham Barrett spent three years as a lecturer at Hunter College Graduate Program in Learning Disabilities. Prior to lecturing at Hunter, she spent five years as a K-1 special education teacher and educational evaluator in the Rye-Nex Unified Free School District. Previously, she was a special education teacher for students with autism-spectrum disorder in grades 3 through 6 at the New York City Department of Education. She began her career as an occupational therapist at the John A. Coleman School at the New York Foundling Hospital. Ms. Cunningham Barrett has a BS in special education from SUNY Baruch College and an MS in special education from SUNY Hunter College. Director of Special Education and Pupil Personnel Services, Dr. Aaron Friedenberg said of her, "Laura is truly a remarkable educator. She didn't just teach students, she empowered them, celebrated them, and mostly believed in them when they needed it most. We will miss her dearly, and we wish her all the best." Ms. Cunningham Barrett, we wish you all the best in your retirement. And we are also accepting the retirement this evening of Ms. Lisa Carter. "It is with sadness that I announced the retirement of Milton School Office Assistant, Lisa Carter." Ms. Carter will retire at the end of June after seven years working in the Rye City School District. Ms. Carter came to Milton in 2018 as an office assistant. In 2022, she became the interim secretary to the school principal. Before coming to Rye, Ms. Carter spent seven years as the library clerk at the Anne Hutchinson School in the Eastchester Union Free School District. Previously, she was a substitute teacher in the Eastchester School District. She began her career as a grades 5 through 8 grammar and composition teacher at the Immaculate Conception School in Stony Point, New York. Ms. Carter has a BS in psychology from Fordham University and an MS in elementary education from Long Island University. Milton School Principal, Anne Marie Pikarski said of her, "It's hard to imagine our school without Lisa. She has been the heart and soul of this place, the calm in the midst of any storm, and the glue that holds us all together. Her dedication, warmth, and unwavering support have touched the lives of countless students, families, and staff. While we are sad to see her go, we wish her all the best in this new chapter. Her presence will be deeply missed, but her legacy of kindness and commitment will forever remain a part of our school story." And Lisa, on a personal note, as a Milton mom and a PTO president who had lots of needs of help, thank you for all that you have done for the school on behalf of the families and the students. You will be greatly missed, and we wish you all the best. So with that, we will now move on to presentation and discussion two, Ms. Boyle, policy review.
Thank you. So our first, we have three policies to look at tonight. Our first two are ones that we reviewed during our last meeting. They are both brand-new policies that are results of New York State law passage. The first is our ex officio student member of the board. As we talked about last week, this was based on a law with the intention of providing students more access to experience and governance and civic responsibilities. But it's also an opportunity for students to have more direct input to the board as it relates to the work of the board. We did have lots of consultation with our high school principal, Mr. Hera, in developing the processes around selection for the students who will serve on the board, and that is all outlined in the policy. It also outlines what the students will be able to participate in and what they will not be able to participate in. And in addition to that, we will be creating a training, almost like a regulation, that will accompany this, that will get into the, more of the detail around helping students understand their role, what their, what their role will be when they're at the meetings, and just to help familiarize them with what the Board of Education does. So any questions or items you'd like to discuss? Nope? Okay. Moving on, our second policy from last week was extreme heat condition days. This was also a brand-new law that will take effect as of the beginning of next school year. And essentially, this was something that was based on health and safety for, really, schools across New York State. That was- That was how it came about, and it outlines responses that would need to be implemented at certain levels of heat that would occur within the building or within spaces in the building. We thankfully, based on a lot of work that's been done over the last several years, have addressed a lot of our ventilation and HVAC needs. And so for our school district, because of all that work and the support of the community through the bond, we, in speaking with our director of facilities, Rob Gimmigliano, he reviewed this, as well as Gabby Peruccio, they're, based on what this outlines, there's no apparent needs that we would need to be concerned with in terms of our buildings as they are right now. What will, what there already is, is a process that exists where if there is a problem in any space, there's a system set up for teachers and individual staff to let the facilities department know about that. And so those plans would just need to be implemented if there was a space that reached either 82 or 88 degrees. Questions? Nope? Okay. So these will be two brand-new policies that we can move forward for adoption on our next agenda.
Okay, great. And with that, we will move on to information and discussion, policy 5300 related to the code of conduct. Ms. Boyle.
Yes. So the policy committee took up the charge of reviewing the code of conduct, I think it was about 18 months ago, and have spent a lot of time trying to do a very comprehensive review of this policy, which has been in place for many years. Last June, we made a minor change to this policy before the beginning of the school year to add the Rye commitment to it in the upfront. And so since then, as we've, as we've continued our review, we've really spent most of our meetings looking at the document, keeping certain things in mind. One is, does it, does the document itself align with what we say in the Rye commitment? Are we hitting those, those marks of that vision? We also want to make sure that it aligns with all of our current practices. We also wanted to try, as much as we could, to eliminate repetitiveness, consolidate where we could, make it a little bit more of a user-friendly document. And we also wanted to ensure that we were meeting all of our legal obligations, because as things change over time, there are small things that change within the law, and so we've been working hand-in-hand with our legal counsel as well. So if you take a look through, you'll see throughout the document, there are some line-by-line edits. I'm not going to go through all of those line-by-line edits tonight, because we'll have to have three or four meetings in order to do it. But the, one of the most, I would say, significant changes, or thematic changes maybe, is to how we approach discipline. So you'll see throughout the document, within the introduction, as well as within the definitions, and a section later in the document, 5300.45, which is titled "Disciplinary Penalties, Procedures, and Referrals," there's been a substantial addition to those, to that language that talks about providing opportunities for growth for students and, and learning through the disciplinary process. Prior to these changes, the, the approach was pretty much, if there was a, something that was in violation of the code of conduct, it went straight to a punitive consequence. So it was either detention, suspension, at least in the language of the, of the document. And so what, in working with all of the administrators actually throughout the elementary, middle, and high school, who helped contribute to the changes within the document, we added a change to the discipline approach to provide, like I said, this opportunity for more learning and growth for students rather than simply a punitive consequent, excuse me, consequence. So I'm going to stop there for the moment and see if anyone has any particular questions to that, because it is one of the larger changes in the document, and then we can keep discussing if there's other pieces that anyone wants to ask a question about or has concerns with.
I have no questions as it relates to that. I just have a statement that I think it is a wonderful practice for us to implement for a few reasons. One, maybe seven years ago, eight years ago, we read the book, The Gift of Failure. And so it's nice to be able to see putting into practice conversations that we've had that are more thematic and larger, and helping students to be able to understand that failure is not about falling down and not getting back up. In fact, failure is how you grow and how you change and how you learn. And so to be able to actually implement that as a district on a system-wide basis, I think is a wonderful opportunity for our students, and I think it's a wonderful opportunity for our adults to help our students to grow.
Yeah, I think we, there was a lot of discussion throughout about how do we, how do we create an atmosphere and provide opportunities for students to learn those skills of accountability, responsibility, navigating when they have a challenge? And then it also, I think there were, there were moments where we were trying, I think, in spots to do more of this kind of layered intervention, but we just didn't have it in a consistent manner. So this actually does allow us to have that opportunity, not just for the students to have that, but also the faculty and the administrators to go to those, to those interventions that actually help to instill that skill set for the students as they are experiencing what are natural and normal consequences throughout their high school and middle school and elementary school years.
Right. Well, and I think as well, nobody who knows any human knows, you know, you're going to make mistakes, you're going to make bad decisions, and you're going to fail, and it's not to be, it's only meant to help them grow in those moments by having something like this. And so setting this up for that, I think, is great. I also do want to say, it was very clear to me, the inclusion of more of the language related to the Rye commitment in some of this upfront, and so I think that was really well done.
Any other questions for anything in, in the document? I think this was the, the most significant change. There are other changes, as I said, primarily, they were meant to try to consolidate where we could, streamline where we could. It's a very lengthy document. There are some elements that are legal requirements that we cannot do much with, and so, you know, if there are any other questions about any of the deletions or additions, please let me know.
So I have, I have no questions.
Okay.
I do, well, it's not, that's not true. It's, so in the section that speaks, sorry, I didn't write the number down, it is 5300.3, prohibited student conduct. Within that section, there is, I believe that's where that section was, now I can't find it, where it talks about behavior on school buses. In the language, we, uh, might be the wrong, no, there it is. It talks about that the requirement of reporting any of, of behavior problems is that of the school bus driver or the supervisor. In our schools, for the purposes of our schools, most of the time, most of our kids, a significant portion of our students are being transported as relates to sports. And so many times, we would find a coach would be on that bus with students as well. So I do think perhaps there should be an inclusion for the term "coach" so that the coach doesn't feel it's the responsibility of the driver or a bus aide. It, we want to make sure that everybody is taking responsibility for all of our students as it relates to student discipline.
Yep. That makes sense.
And I may have given you the wrong section.
No, I got it.
Was it in there?
Yeah.
Okay. The other point, and I didn't write this down either, but you do talk about, the, the policy, rather, talks about cell phones.
Yes.
And as we know, coming down the pipe is a whole policy that will be a standalone policy as it relates to the use of cell phones.
Yes.
Uh, this policy really talks about it as it relates to the acceptable use policy and things that are, you know, prohibited behaviors in the code of conduct. That policy's going to be completely different. So it, there will need to be an update or a change again to this code of conduct once that policy is created.
Yes. So in thinking about that, we did talk about this peripherally, because at this point, we don't have the final language of the law in order to create the policy.
Yep.
Um, you know, I suppose we could, we could do one of two things. We could include what we know will be the policy number and name and indicate that it, it will be coming, or we can just make the addition at a later date and add it in. I don't know that it would change the substance of what we have here, because most of this is talking about, this is, this falls under the search, the ability to search, if a student, if, what's on the student's phone. So this, this section speaks to a little bit something from a subject matter different, but I do believe, I agree that we have to have a reference to that policy.
Yeah, I think the other difficult piece is that we will be required, per state statute, to have a reporting, a reporting mechanism as it relates to students being disciplined for cellphone policy, you know, lack of adherence.
Right.
So my recommendation would be, we need to get this policy going and forward and moving. We adopt it, and once we know, because at this point, we still do not have explicit direction from the state about what our cellphone policy needs to be, that we go ahead with this policy as written, we create whatever the cellphone policy is, and then we will just have to go back and make whatever changes we need to in this document.
Yeah. That makes sense.
Those were my only ideas.
Okay. Okay. So seeing no other questions, one thing, oh.
Yes. I didn't have a specific question about this. I had a question about just code and cod, code of conduct, and it, where it lives. It lives in policy. And are, will you remind me, are kids, do kids sign off on the code of conduct? I know, like, Family ID does, right?
Yes.
But do, when you register for sports, I feel like it references the code of conduct, but for students, when they come in in September, do they, when, when parents, or when parents register them?
Yeah, it's during the registration. You sign off on it.
Do we sign off on that? Will you remind me? We do?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah. It's in all the handbooks, usually too. Certainly, it's in the, the high school handbook.
Okay.
But there's a sign-off as part of the re-registration process.
Okay. Got it. Um, one, but maybe to that, related to that point, as a requirement of changing the code of conduct is that we have to have a public hearing for it. So with some of the changes that we discussed, really just the one change that we discussed tonight, we can move this forward to the next agenda and then have the public hearing that same night that we would have our second reading, because the important thing is to get, go through the process so that we can have it finalized before the July 1, started the school year. So more than likely, that's what we will do, is, is hold the public hearing at our next meeting as well as our second reading. And then we can proceed to have it adopted at the, at the last meeting in June.
Got it. Okay. Great.
So I do just want to make sure that I thank the policy committee, those former and current members, because this was, and the administrators at all levels, from the superintendent to our, our high school principal, to anyone else who came and joined the conversation. It was very comprehensive, and it was lengthy, but I believe the updates that we have made have really helped to reflect more of our approach that we want to be having and, and really hopefully reflect some of the culture changes we're trying to make within the district. So I just want to thank everyone for their input and their patience and their contributions for all of it.
Great. Thank you. We will now move on to communications to and from the board, and we had two meetings since our last meeting. We had audit committee and health and safety. Mr. Shibenov, do you want to give an update on what happened at the audit committee?
I would be more than happy to.
Lovely.
So the, the focus of this last audit meeting was on our internal audit. I think the important takeaway was there were no new findings in the risk assessment, which was great news to see. I'm sure a sigh of relief from Gabby over there. But I guess the, and it obviously, it had a focus area this year, which was, was human resources, and again, clean bill of health, which was also great to see. I guess the one area that was flagged as something we could work to improve upon was around absence tracking, the fact that it's currently being tracked in two locations, and they need to be, I think, best practice if we can reconcile those, particularly around substitute teachers and allocating payment accordingly. I guess, looking forward, we also had just a preview of the timeline for the external audit. Obviously, year end is June 30. The prelim will begin mid-June. They'll start looking at policies, contracts, leases, transactions, all that good stuff, with the audit beginning, I guess, mid-August, and then we will have the results somewhere, it looks like, between October 1st to the 15th. I guess the other, only other bit, and I know that will show up in the technology committee, but the cyber risk assessment was something that did come up as a topic of discussion, and just highlighting that it is great that this is now being done annually, and obviously, that information does feed up to, to Gabby as well. So there is a lot of cross-departmental coordination of, of those results. So those were my takeaways. If there was anything I missed, feel free to share away.
I think that was a very comprehensive summary. Thank you. All right. So then we had health and safety. Mr. Stein.
Yep. So we had a discussion, which was led by our security vendor. The upcoming cellphone ban from New York was a high topic of conversation, especially around the logistics of IDs, where we won't be able to use the phone as the ID anymore and have to switch back to a, a physical ID. They've got plans for that and are working through the logistics. It was also commented that, you know, while, again, as you commented earlier, have to wait for the final specifics of the law, it is anticipated that we will be able to construct something that is likely to somewhat mirror the current middle school rules, meaning in the health and safety context, they're not anticipating having to do shakedowns of kids on the way into school to make sure they're not carrying a cellphone or things like that. So again, you know, all, all of this stuff's a little TBD, but that is the, the current anticipation, and that they will get the ID stuff figured out by fall. There was some, also some discussion on new terminology that, you know, every year the state will come up with different words and phrases that you get added, deleted, modified, and went over some of those. Nothing terribly exciting for us to discuss, but that'll be when they do updates in the fall for faculty and administration and staff will go over those, as well as some new procedures for things like, you know, events that occur after school. If there was a, you know, lockdown event or a dangerous event or something, and procedures around doing things after school was off, was, is coming out in the, in state policies, and they are, will be implementing and updating that as well.
Great. Thank you.
Jane, I had the committee too.
Oh, great. What'd you have?
I had professional learning.
All right. Awesome. Tell us about it.
Okay. On May 8th, I attended the professional learning committee that Dr. Murray helped facilitate. On May 8th, I attended the Professional Learning Committee that Dr. Murray helped facilitate, and what we did is, we looked, or we started off with the district goals of 25-26, which are Critical Thinking and Social Emotional Learning. Dr. Murray had put that, you know, on the wall, and then compared that to the 24-25 last year's Professional Learning Goals, and there were three of them. She put that on the wall, and so then the committee talked about how to revise the goals from last year for 25-26 to align with the district goals. And it was a very interactive committee meeting. We had Post-its and, where we, we rotated around to the, the different posters on the wall and put up activities and, and, and goals and things, and things like that, and had a very robust discussion. And then the takeaway was Dr. Murray was going to take all of that and come back to the committee with a new 25-26 goal, goals and outline, and then we'd present that at the next meeting. So there'll be another meeting, I think, in June, and that will then set the stage for 25-26.
Great, sounds like a great meeting. All right, any other communications to and from the Board? Okay, seeing none. We will be adjourning into Executive Session, and then we will subsequently be adjourning out of Executive Session to go over to attend the results for where the budget votes. And so then we will come back here to close out. So can I, at this point, just have a motion to go into Executive Session? Valerie Lappin, seconded by, Matt Shibenov, all those in favor? That is 7-0. We'll be back in a bit. All right, and we are back for the Budget and Trustee Vote Results, and we will turn it over to Lauren.
Good evening. I'm pleased to announce the unofficial results of the Annual School Budget Vote and Board Trustee Election. This was an uncontested election. Board candidate Jennifer Boyle received 810 votes. Board candidate Jane Anderson received 793 votes. The budget was approved with a total of 765 yes votes to 158 no votes, for an overall total of 923 votes cast for this election. Thank you and congratulations.
All right, great news. Thank you so much, Lauren. All right, tonight, we have received overwhelming support from the community with the passing of the school district's 2025-2026 school budget. We thank the members of the community who came out to vote, who attended our budget roadshows and meetings leading up to tonight's vote. The budget is a reflection of the district's priorities for the upcoming school year. With your approval, the district will expand and continue to provide high-quality education to all students while further enhancing the climate and culture inside of our school buildings. We look forward to the implementation of the International Baccalaureate Diploma Program and the work of the Director of School Guidance and Student Wellness. As we progress through the 25-26 school year, I'm sure we will get updates about this new work, as well as updates on the high-quality instruction our teachers will continue to provide to our students. While we start to close out this great school year, we now will start to look forward to next year with great anticipation. And with that, we will have our next meeting on June 3rd, where we will start the evening with our tenure reception. Can I have a motion to adjourn this evening's meeting? Matt Shibenov, seconded by, Jen Boyle, all those in favor? 7-0. Good night, everyone.